Good morning.
I was in your committee last week and now you're in mine?
I am. Good morning, Senator Bullock, Representative Herbert, and esteemed members of Labor, Commerce, Research, and Economic Development. I am Karen Bashan and I represent House District 29, which is coast of Scarborough. But what you've actually got to pretend is that I'm Heather Soraki because this is the classic example of an inability to be in two places at the same time. So Representative Soraki has asked me to step in and deliver her testimony. So here it goes. I am Representative Heather Soraki and I am proud to serve the people of House District 28, which is part of Scarborough. I stand before you today in support of LD 1010 and act to afford public employers flexibility to achieve efficiency and quality in management. When Maine School Management Association asked me if I would consider supporting this bill, I did not hesitate to get behind this common sense proposal. According to the school funding formula, which factors in property valuations and student population, it is estimated that Scarborough will lose more than $1 million from our state subsidy. While it is true that Scarborough is a bustling coastal community with more than 1,000 small businesses and we do have 69 fewer students than last year, losing $1 million is significant. But we are told with a shrug that the recent Picas report has reviewed our school funding formula and it is very equitable and fair compared to other states. It is also true that many communities in Maine are still in a deep recession and depend on the revenue generated from southern Maine. As school boards struggle to meet the growing demands of education system with many unfunded mandates and additional expectations at the local level, this bill will help save money by allowing school boards the flexibility of subcontracting work with vendors. This bill will not affect teachers' contracts. As it stands, if a budget crisis occurs, a school district's hands are tied by lengthy and expensive negotiations with uncertain outcomes. Senator Cushing's testimony explained a recent situation in Scarborough whereby our school board worked hard to subcontract out custodial work only to put people that saving costs was not a valid reason to proceed. Adding insult to injury, taxpayers are left picking up the tab on substantial legal fees. So what can towns like Scarborough do to help mitigate the expected revenue losses? As a 30-year resident of Scarborough, I can tell you that the answer almost always involves raising property taxes and sometimes involves cutting some services. Here is where LD 1010 comes in, allowing local school boards to work to keep money in the classroom by letting them negotiate and find cost savings in other areas of the budget. Thank you for your consideration and I urge your support.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions for Representative Bashan standing in for Representative Soraki?
Phew, thank you.
Any other legislators or co-sponsors wishing to offer testimony? I see none. I would now like to invite members of the department or the administration to come forward to offer their testimony.
Good morning. Excuse me, good morning. Senator Bullock, Representative Herbert, and distinguished members of the Labor, Commerce, Research, and Economic Development Committee, I am John Butera, senior economic advisor for Governor Lepage, and I am here to testify in support of LD 489 and 1353. These are the right-to-work bills. And I have submitted a little testimony, so I just wanted to make some comments and give you what I think is a real-life example of what right-to-work can mean for Maine. As you know, the governor and the administration have endorsed proponents of right-to-work. You will hear testimony from Ms. Rubinowitz from the Department of Labor in a few minutes that quotes a site-location consultant who talked about the recent decision in Michigan who went right-to-work. His quote is, "Michigan will no longer be eliminated from the site-location process. They will see a significant increase in the number of projects." I want to follow up on that. That statement is real. That statement is impactful. I lived it. In 1992, BMW opened up their first plant in North America in the Greenville-Spartanburg region in South Carolina, an area that had been decimated by job losses from the textile industry. That search began two years previously, in 1990. There are many numerous criteria that factored into BMW selecting South Carolina: logistics, tax climate, cost of doing business, workforce, and all of it. All the usual items that any business examines while making a significant investment. Oh, and there was one other criteria. It had to be a right-to-work state. How do I know that? I was one of the five or six project members that worked on that project, advising BMW where to locate that plant. BMW promised an investment of several hundred billion dollars on up to 2,000 full-time highways that are jobs. South Carolina stepped up and delivered. It beat out Omaha, Nebraska, another right-to-work state. How has it panned out for South Carolina? Let me just briefly provide you some figures and you be the judge. Currently, 8,800 workers working at the facility. BMW has invested $7 billion in the region over 20 years. There are nearly 100 suppliers locating South Carolina that employ 20,000 people. The per capita income in Greenville County is 15% above the state average. The impact of landing BMW in South Carolina has been nothing short of transformational. South Carolinians can't imagine their state without it. And here's the takeaway from this, folks. South Carolina would have never had the opportunity to compete for that project had it not been a right-to-work state. I want Maine to compete for these projects. I want Maine to have a seat at the table. Do we have a chance to win one of these projects? We'll never know. The great Wayne Gretzky said, "You miss 100% of the shots you don't take." I want Maine to have and take a shot. The time is now for right-to-work. Indiana and Michigan have passed it in 2012. Wisconsin passed it this past year. Kentucky has 11 counties that have passed right-to-work legislation. Recent polls by bipartisan organizations indicate that over 70% of voters support right-to-work. Let's give Maine a chance. Let's pass these bills, make them competitive, and give us that opportunity to take that shot at the goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butera. Any questions for Mr. Butera? Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Butera, are you saying that all companies will not go anywhere unless it's a right-to-work state?
No.
And as a matter of fact, a lot of companies don't care and it's not a priority of yours?
It varies by company to company. We all have key criteria that they put on their matrix to evaluate where they invest.
And, yes, Madam Chairman, in the top 15 states for high-tech companies, how many of those are actually right-to-work states?
I don't know which ones you're referring to. I don't know.
The top 15 high-tech state companies, Massachusetts, Delaware, California, Washington, Maryland, Colorado, Virginia, Connecticut, Utah, New Jersey, New Hampshire, New York, Minnesota, Vermont, and Oregon. There's a couple of them. Just a couple, yeah.
Any other questions? Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I read this report from the National Association of Development Organizations in a search for the words "right-to-work." The title of the report is "Reviving the Economic Engine: South Carolina's Auto Plus Roots." Search for right-to-work in the document, several pages along it, says in that, "A pre esteemed analysis, not a single mention of right-to-work. Why do you think that is?"
I don't know. I sat in the room. We were given the criteria. We were told we need a right-to-work state.
Representative Stetkus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that BMW project, did you follow that any further? I'm curious to know what types of wages and benefits a company like that provides.
Representative, I don't know the specific wages, but again, I think the county it is located in traditionally had been one of the poorest counties in the state with the textile industry back 20, 30 years. Again, they are now the second highest per capita income in the state, only behind the county of which it's located.
You have a follow-up?
And you had said that was, what, 8,800 workers?
Currently, they have just announced another expansion and plan to reach their maximum employment of 8,800 people at the facility.
Just one more. I'm curious to know, what would that size business compare to here in the state of Maine?
That's a tough question.
Does BIW employ that many people?
No, they fluctuate and they're probably in the 3,000 or 4,000 range. I don't know, I'd have to look at analysis, employment to population, and see what that would equate to. But suffice it to say, it would be a very large employer.
Representative Herbert?
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for being here today, Mr. Butera. And thank you for your experience. I'm just curious that I don't have as much experience as you, but it just seems to me that, you know, if someone like BMW were making a decision to move to a state, that it wouldn't, it would have to be with decisions like energy costs and proximity to materials and proximity to your customers. And it seems like there would be a lot of things that would go into making a decision of that nature.
Absolutely, and as I alluded to in my testimony, there are many, many factors which go into the decision-making process. It varies from company to company, from industry to industry, and depending on what their objective is. Yes, logistics were important. Trained workforce was important, as it is with all of them. But again, I have sat in rooms where we've been told, again, this is going back to my previous life, and even currently when I'm out there beating the bushes, I was in Florida last week speaking to Embraer, Airbus, and Bombardier. And again, the issue comes up. Is it going to be a handoff-beadoff? No. But if we want to be competitive, we've got to look at all the pieces of the puzzle. This is one piece of the puzzle.
So with that being said, I'm still, I have trouble wrapping my brain around if just a tiny section of this particular collective bargaining law is really going to make so much of a difference in attracting all of these businesses. Can you explain to me why businesses have such a problem? What, do they just not want to deal with collective bargaining? Is that what it is?
I think they want to make sure that they have the flexibility of a workplace environment where they can do the things that will make them successful.
One more. Follow-up? If you could be more specific, what does that mean?
In today's environment, business needs workers to be flexible, these workers to be able to do a variety of tasks, be able to do the things that best position them for success. It's a very different world we live in today than 30, 40 years ago in terms of what is needed out of the workforce.
And would you say the impact, what would the impact of Maine being the first right-to-work state in the country might be? Speculating upon that?
I think we'd get a lot of inquiries. Again, an inquiry is one thing, but again, we're not even getting to inquiries at this point. So, you know, our job collectively, I think the legislature, everybody, needs to make sure that we're doing everything we can with all the other pieces of the puzzle, Representative Herbert said. There's many, many, many other factors that more times than not might be more important, but we don't know. But again, we're missing, I think, the opportunity or the boat on projects that I think can transform the entire state.
Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you think it's curious that the report says, I quote, "Why South Carolina? Most accounts point to some common themes such as availability of qualified workers, a good educational training system, necessary transportation infrastructure, including the deep-water port of Charleston, and a pro-business attitude led by then-Governor Carol Campbell. The presence of several international companies doing business in the state and region was certainly a plus." And in fact, it even quotes, the report quotes you, and you say, "In this business, there are those who talk the talk and those who walk, and those who can actually walk the walk. But the South Carolina team was a league of its own." All that being said, not a single mention of right-to-work as explicitly being a factor.
I'll repeat what I said. If they were not right-to-work, they would not have been considered.
Any other questions? Senator Patrick?
Thank you. Mr. Butera, do you have any idea, out of the 10 highest unemployed states, how many of them are right-to-work states?
I do not, Senator.
Seven.
Any other questions? Representative Stet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With your experience with BMW and your previous job, I'm curious to know, as far as the length of time you did that type of job, how many other major manufacturers or even smaller manufacturers you dealt with and some of the criteria that they were looking for as well?
I held that position for just about eight years or so, plus or minus. I probably worked on anywhere from 25 to 30 projects a year, so you can give them that. It's several hundred projects, 200, 300 projects. Probably 70% of those were manufacturing-related, and I would say that probably half of those, the element of right-to-work, had some factor in the decision process. And again, it varies from company to company and project to project. But again, when you sit down with a company and you're talking to them about what's going to make them successful, they have what we call critical success factors. And it is, it's workforce, labor, and they weigh them. And our job was to go out in final places which minimize their risk and put them at the best opportunity to be successful.
Follow-up?
So we could be talking 100 or 100 different companies over that period that basically crossed the state of Maine, right off this list?
Well, and again, they may have been looking in the West or the Midwest for logistical or transportation reasons. I don't know. But again, depending on what their objective is, they may have been wanting to open up a West Coast operation and they limited it to 20 states, and then they would put those qualifiers on of, again, right-to-work and not left.
Thank you.
Representative Stet? Is this regarding a question that you?
No, no, it's a different question. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go back that way. I'm trying to think.
Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Butera, you'd be surprised that of all the economic tours I've done as a legislator, I have asked the questions, "What are the impediments to business in Maine?", and they were energy always number one, transportation was always number two, having the availability of enough several thousand educated workforce, number three, and four and five, depending on the company, it was either healthcare costs or taxes, and never once did anyone say "right-to-work." Would you be surprised at that?
I am not surprised. Again, what we're trying to do is position Maine to be competitive and compete for some of these projects that are happening all across the country. We want to see it at the table.
I have a follow-up, Mr. Butera, actually. So would you say the administration is working actively on the issues that Senator Patrick brings up?
Absolutely.
And are those easy factors to control?
No. Again, for business to be successful, there's many, there's a myriad of factors that need to happen, which Senator Patrick alluded to, a good chunk of them. But again, we need to do all that we can to ensure that we're as competitive as we can.
And would this be, assuming it could pass the legislature, something easy for us to control?
Yes, this makes us more competitive in the business attraction arena.
Representative Stet? Number of the question?
I did, thank you. I understand that you said that, you know, this is a matter of getting inquiries in the first place, but have you or have folks in your department kept track of companies that have, that you can actually physically document and present to the work session perhaps that have said, "No, we're not going to consider Maine because of the lack of a right-to-work state"? I mean, I would assume that since this seems to be an issue important to the department and to the governor, the executive, that you would keep track of those things.
Couple of things, Representative. In my daily course of business, I'm not a business attraction person. We have a main and company which does business attraction with the department. Yes, I do engage along with the government in trying to recruit businesses here, and I can provide to you some information if you'd like to share it with me.
Any other questions? Mr. Butera?
Thank you.
I just want to remind people too, we do have overflow. If you're getting tired of standing, I know a lot of you have been standing for a while. Energy and utilities is outside the double doors, take a left, and it's that committee on that side of the building, at this end of the hall.
Senator Bullock, Representative Herbert, and members of the Joint State Insurance Committee on Labor, Commerce, Research, and Economic Development, I'm the industry Lee Rubinowitz, the Director of Communication and Operations for the Maine Department of Labor, and here to discuss and analyze bills. I'm going to briefly excerpt some, several pieces of my written testimony. The department supports bills before us today for primary reasons. Maine's economy is growing slowly due to our aging and shrinking population. We need to attract more employers to our state that will not only offer our current residents good jobs with high wages, but attract out-of-state people and families to move to Maine. Right-to-work provides every worker the opportunity to exercise his, as our First Amendment guarantee, of the freedom of assembly. Unions that are not mandatory provide a higher level of responsiveness to worker needs, more customer service at a lower cost. And public sector employers must be responsive to the taxpayer and ensure that the work of the people is carried out in the most efficient and cost-effective manner possible. We need a flexible, modern workforce. Right-to-work does not ban or outlaw unions. Let's get that misunderstanding off the table. Then what is right-to-work? Right-to-work laws prohibit labor contracts that require private and public sector employers to terminate workers who do not want to pay dues or fees to a union. Right-to-work laws do not affect labor contracts. In Maine, private sector unions will still negotiate working conditions, wages, hours, and all other such terms of employment. Since the National Labor Relations Act was amended by the Taft-Hartley Act of 1947, individual states have the option of enacting laws that prohibit union security agreements. Today, 25 states have opted to be right-to-work. The trend is clear and is moving towards right-to-work. Maine must compete with these states for employers and jobs. Maine must do all it can to remain competitive with these other states. Becoming right-to-work is not a race to the bottom, as some may characterize it. Instead, in these 25 states, unions must earn the membership of their members by providing value. Unions must do a better job of serving their customers because their customers are not forced to pay to support an organization because they do not address their needs or represent their beliefs. A personal story from my background, when I was 16, I worked in a grocery store, or 15, it was in a mandatory union membership state, and I had that, I made minimum wage, and those dues were deducted out of my paycheck. I didn't really need to be a union member. It was not my career, although I worked there for five years. I had many other coworkers who worked there, and they appreciated being a union member. I would have liked to have that choice, and I think they would have liked to have that choice as well. Right-to-work is a pro-worker, pro-choice policy. Under right-to-work, if you love your union, you can keep your union. In fact, unlike the Affordable Care Act supporters, similar turn of phrase, keeping your membership in your union is what right-to-work is all about. You have the freedom to choose the organizations to which you pay your hard-earned dollars. The data are mixed on unionization rates, and we can do study to study, but some years in so-called union security states do better, while in other years, right-to-work states have better unionization numbers. But in 2014, Indiana, which became right-to-work in 2012, saw a net increase of 50,000 union members. Employers prefer to relocate or open new facilities in right-to-work states. This leads to increased job growth. Michigan became right-to-work in 2012, and quote, "Since its right-to-work law took effect, Michigan has experienced the nation's sixth-largest growth in the number of people working, adding 141,000 jobs from March 2013 to December 2014," according to the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics. "Since right-to-work became effective, average weekly earnings increased 5.4% faster than the national increase of 3.7%. Weekly wages were $773 in Michigan in March and rose to $815 in December 2014." Site Selection Magazine, which Mr. Butera referred to in his comments, talked about the responses from individuals who deal with corporations in site selection in response to Michigan's becoming a right-to-work state. End quote, "Where it will have an effect is where there are companies who are looking for locations. Michigan will no longer be eliminated because they are not a right-to-work state." And another official who deals in site selection said, called, "Michigan's sudden change a dramatic demonstration of the state's commitment to the transformation of their business environment. It also will shine a big spotlight on all of the other work they have been doing, including overhauling their corporate tax structure, simplifying, oh, excuse me, simplifying regulatory processes and being innovative." Thank you.
Thank you. I know you were trying to finish that quote. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Butera? Interesting statistics in there. Do you have any idea whether Michigan has seen an increase in union membership since they became?
I don't have that data. I did know that Indiana has a startling increase.
Yeah. Any other questions? Senator Patrick?
Did you mention something, quote, "Freedom of assembly or association"?
Right. That was in my initial report, of course.
Freedom of association is already covered in the National Labor Relations Act, Section 7, prohibits discrimination against any employee because they have children to join or not join.
But I also get to choose to what organizations I want to pay money to.
Follow-up? And would you be surprised, as I asked the previous speaker, that not all, Mr. Butera, that not all companies in Site Magazine agree that right-to-work is a big thing? Matter of fact, area development, 100 meeting locations, desire of places to doing business, employers themselves say right-to-work is not a significant factor in locating decisions. So, I mean, you're going to, if six of one, half a dozen other would be right-to-work.
I would not agree. And what I would say is that in Maine, you know, we are looking at a slow-growth economy. It's slow, if not stagnant. We are working very hard at the department to make Maine competitive and to increase the skills of our workforce to help attract businesses here. But we need to use every tool in our toolbox as well, in addition to upskilling our workforce, in addition to tax reform, which both sides of the legislature are working on initiatives under that area, so, under that. So we know that tax reform is coming, assumption reform to Maine. All the tools that we have at our disposal lead to be used to recruit businesses, and recruiting businesses, it's a little chicken in the egg. We need workers and we need businesses, but we need a variety of businesses that will attract more people to move to Maine because we're not only have a worker shortage, but we're looking at a lot of economic degradation that comes when there's no one there to buy your house, when you're ready to retire, and all those kinds of things. So an influx of good-paying jobs will attract more people to this state.
Representative Stet?
Senator Patrick? Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Rubinowitz, you went through that testimony quickly, and I may have missed something. In the back of your testimony is a whole bunch of people's names with dollar figures.
Yes.
Can you go over that? I think you already did.
So one point in my written testimony that I didn't address orally was that in the right-to-work states, the union leadership are paid about, on average, 20% less. That's the workers who work for the union itself manage the union, not the employees of the business who are the union members. And in Maine, the attachment from the Maine Educational Association shows the salaries of the individuals. If you click on the link that's at the top of that attachment, it takes you to the page where they show that list of salaries, and there's a graph at the top which indicates that, and this is mentioned in my testimony, the salaries of the workers who are paid by the union, the union management, who make more than $50,000 a year for the Maine Educational Association, have been increasing from 2002 to 2012, while the workers who work for that organization and make less than $50,000 a year have been decreasing. And right-to-work, because you're being more responsive to your membership, controlling costs is one of those things, as Representative Ward spoke about this morning in terms of being responsive to the taxpayer, you're being responsive to your membership by controlling costs. And you have fewer dues potentially because people who disagree with you or aren't satisfied with your service are not being forced to pay and therefore...
Did I understand, the union leadership recently has gotten better wage increases or benefits than the people that they're representing?
Well, no, no, that was, it's about, as an employer entity, the MEA, the workers who work for the MEA directly and who have earned, who have earned more than $50,000 a year over the past 10 to 12 years have had their wages increased, while the workers who make less than $50,000 a year have had their wages decrease.
Thank you.
Representative Hertig?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This information regarding salaries is pretty interesting. We had a bill a couple of weeks ago concerning the salaries of CEOs. How did the Labor, Department of Labor testify on that bill?
The department testified that that was already pretty much being done at federal law, and it was going to require owner's work on the department's behalf in order to pay for that and post it publicly. This was all publicly available also.
Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said to Mr. Butera, I've done numerous visits throughout the state of Maine on the legislative tours, and the five things that I found most important, the state of Maine businesses and other businesses, I would assume, because any business coming to the state would have the same issues, the number-one problem was always energy costs. Number two was always transportation costs. Number three was an educated workforce with a 2,000 to 5,000 in order to bring the thing in. And three and four, or four and five, were always healthcare or taxes, depending on where it was. So, would you say this would be the number-six priority?
I would say that right-to-work is often rolled into what we call business friendliness or inviting business climate, business environment. But just because something's a priority, something else is a priority, doesn't mean we shouldn't address it. You know, if we were to say only, we should only work on energy, that's a number-one thing, this committee would not have much work to do because this committee doesn't deal in regulating energy costs. What we need to do is make sure that we're addressing as many of the top priorities as we possibly can and have as many tools in our toolbox available to attract businesses. When that phone rings at DECD or at Maine Company, we want to be the competitive choice. And at this point in time, being the first in New England, and not even just New England, but really the Northeast, to become a right-to-work state, if someone wants to live in this environment, this beautiful landscape, and have access to the mountains and the beaches, and give our workers good-paying jobs, we should be their first choice, and we should make ourselves competitive to be that choice.
Any other questions? So, would you say this is an important tool in the toolbox?
Yes. It's a critical tool.
And how many other states? 25?
There are 25 now. New Mexico has a bill addressing right-to-work that's currently, I believe, in their Senate, and there are several other states that have been considering it as well. And these are not, these are traditionally, like Ohio's been looking at it, they're traditionally strong union, what we call the Rust Belt states, where they've had a decline in industry. They want to bring that industry back, and they're looking at right-to-work.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Part of the theme that I heard with the right-to-work is giving them flexibility. One of the things that I will say is, as a maintenance mechanic hired in 1980 in a paper mill, I was a dinosaur because all I was was a welder. And then through my union and the company sitting down together, I became a welder, pipe fitter, then I had a welder pipe for a mill right, welder pipe for a tin hooker, welder pipe for, I've got about nine different crafts within my skill now. Would you say that is flexibility, in that unions have the ability to offer flexibility?
I think that in your case, you were offered exceptional flexibility, and you took great advantage of it. I can speak from experience in working in the Department of Labor as the Director, wearing my Director of Operations title, that we do have a lack of flexibility in terms of managing the state's workforce due to the restraints of the collective bargaining agreement. For one example, if we have, we can't cross-train people because that would be training someone for someone else's job, and it may show preference. If we have an absence of a director or a program manager, for example, in the department, and that individual stays on medical leave for several months, and we promote another individual to serve in an acting capacity during the medical leave, when, say, that director is on medical leave, decides that they cannot longer come back, they can't come back and work to the, work for the department or the program manager. When we go to interview, that person who is in acting capacity can't talk about any of the things they learned during that acting capacity during the job interview, even though they have those skills and they've done that job. They, that would put them at, the other workers at an unfair competitive advantage. We're barred from asking those questions in the job interview, and the individual is prohibited from mentioning it. If they do mention some of those skills and say, "I learned this while I was on acting capacity doing X job," we have to discount those statements when we're weighing that candidate's qualifications to fill the job. That is a hamstring on the department to be able to promote good people and to recognize that they actually have the skills to do the job and they've been able to do the job before. You know, there's, when we talk about looking at taxpayer dollars, there's a provision in the state contract for bereavement leave. State employees get five days of bereavement leave. That, there was a worker who came, I was told this in a training session by HR when I was learning how to be a manager and working within the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. That worker came to work for the state. His mother had passed away several years before, but he had a right to take that bereavement leave, so he took five days of bereavement leave, even though no one in his family had passed away within almost 10 years. And that was challenged, and it was decided.